She has a lot to post.
How many communications are we thinking, just the ones you mentioned?
Um, at, right now, it's once a month, it may be twice a month if we have a special event.
So, I would be concerned about overloading people's email.
So, maybe just special events then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And those, right now, are happening on a, like, quarterly basis.
Okay.
I would say maybe special events that include more than just the kids. You know, if you're trying to bring the public or the residents of town in.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm thinking of, so, Miles, do you?
Yes, no, that makes...
That makes sense?
Yeah.
All right, that's it?
That's it.
That's one of the more simple things we'll do as well.
Oh, and one question, um, the email that went out looking for volunteers for tree warding and parks and rec. There were no descriptions with them?
Mm-hmm.
Where do we find descriptions of those positions? Is there descriptions?
I've, I've heard that there are RSAs now, like, floating around social media, but otherwise, um, no, there are no descriptions because they're dictated by RSA. So, that being said, yes, I was eager to get the message out and there are no descriptions. Also because we haven't, they haven't had a strong role here necessarily to give examples of how they've been really helpful in the past, but it would be great if people took some ownership and did more with them. So, um, I'll see if I can follow up and make sure that we can, um, maybe reference the RSAs for people. Yeah, thank you, Susan.
Any other, if anyone?
Yep, uh, I'm just here to get a signature for that race that we do. Uh, this, the cell, um, people already sent a letter to the Contamination Committee on the fourth.
Yep.
So I just need, so the, the state just needs, um, a signature for, because we use by Centennial Park. So that's basically what I, the only thing I need.
Okay. Okay, so Denise probably could not hear that, so, uh, gentleman here from, um, six oh three...
Endur.
Endur, sorry, I tried, I knew it was a six oh three park. Uh, they run a road race in town.
Oh, yeah?
Or they have in the past, um, and they use part of those, um, town's property, a scotland property.
Right.
And by Centennial Park, so, um, the Southeast Land Trust holds the, um, the easement for, um, the, the portion of, um, of a scotland area that they use. So we need to get their sign off. It's part of the agree, part of the agreement that of self holding this easement, I guess. And we didn't know this in the past, so we, we want to make sure we're honoring that agreement, and they've signed off on it. So now, um, the Select Board just has to sign off on the, um, application of the Liquor Commission. I'm assuming you're serving alcohol?
Okay, so, we did have some issues last, last year, right? Is this the same group?
Yes, we addressed that, um, last week, I think it was, yeah.
Okay.
Was it just last week?
Yep.
Okay, um, so, did you still have concerns, or?
Nope, nope, it's not, it hasn't been addressed and it won't happen again. We're good.
Miles?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, Chief, um, they're serving alcohol, I guess. Do you have any objections? Is it being served out in the park?
Yep.
Was it served in the park last year?
Yep.
Was there any problems last year, Chief?
Nothing more.
Okay, well, that's quite a good thing. All right, so do we have any objections to be signing off on the, the one day liquor licensing?
Do, do you still want the policy to go to you, or do you want it to go to you?
Why are they, why are they serving alcohol?
They give them a beer at the end of the race.
Oh, okay.
That's why, how I would run the race, Jim.
I'd buy a beer first.
Yeah, that might be, well, too, Carol. Might have to have one first.
So we have a one million dollar insurance policy and it's just always gone to him because Susan just signed it and didn't do anything, so I just always set him the policies you want, huh?
I would take the policy.
Okay, cool.
And they're also discussing that, that there's an insurance policy that they'll, they'll give the town.
And that includes the insurance policy states that there is any alcohol there as well?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
No objection.
Any objections? All right, so I'm gonna sign off on the, um, God, I lost my glasses, okay.
What is the official name of this group?
It's called Dixon's Revenge.
Okay.
So when we were coming up with it, so, how it started is Silas from the, from the site where he wanted us to come in and put it on our race, and so we started digging around with the, the history of the town, and there was a, back in the eighteen hundreds, there was a, a guy that left the mill building, traveled over to Berwick, ended up killing somebody, and then, and then stashed out in a bar or a pub in Rawlins Road, New Hampshire. So we ended up calling it Dixon's Revenge.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, any other? Charlie, you have your hand up.
Okay, Charlie down Rawlins Road. I just have one question. How's the staffing on Team Rawly and, uh, some, and Team Raw, and Summer Camp and Team Rawly?
Let me ask, do you know what the staffing situation is?
Not yet. We're having a rec committee meeting tomorrow night, so we'll get an update. The first priority was to hire a director, um, and then that person would have a say in some of the other positions. I believe the rec committee was also going to hire the, the team camp director. So, no, I don't have any updates about, you know, whether or not they have somebody that they're interested in.
Have they hired a director yet? Well, you got that information drawn?
Um, if, whether or not they have one, I'll, I'll know that tomorrow night. I don't, you know, so far, I don't believe they do.
Okay, so we'll have an update for next week, I guess.
What was the question?
If the, how the staffing is coming along for the summer rec program. Any other, any input? All right, seeing none, we're gonna get to departmental business. Chief, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
One purchase order. Number one five seven seven to AAA Police Supply for ammunition. Um, we're looking to send the new guy to academy next month. He needs to bring a couple thousand rounds with him, plus to stock up our, uh, our, our supply. So looking to get six cases of forty S and W Blazer, that's practice ammunition, two cases of twelve gauge shotgun, four cases of fifty-five full metal jacket rifle ammunition, and one case of forty S and W Gold Dot Hollow Point, which is our duty ammunition, for a grant total of two thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. We have thirty-two hundred in that line item.
Okay, I'll move purchase order fifteen seventy-seven to AAA Police Supply, the amount of twenty-six hundred and seventy-four dollars for ammunition.
Any discussion? All right, purchase order fifteen seventy-seven should have moved in second. If all of them favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
And I understand Officer Hancock popped in, uh, last Monday for a short visit and kind of prepped you on a grant that he was looking to do and participate in. We have the paperwork here, um, and it's basically, uh, he's one of the three people, I guess, that are on the SWAT team that are looking to go to this breaching technique, uh, and get certified for all these breaching techniques. So, the grand cost of the grants, the state and federal portion is three thousand seventy-nine dollars, and the town may be, uh, the town portion may be up to two hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, according to Officer Hancock. The three thousand takes care of the tuition, uh, six nights of the Best Western in, uh, in New Jersey, as well as his meals. The two thirty-five, thirty-six might be possible overtime for him because it's a six, it's a six day course, and, um, he works forty hours a week, so, so maybe eight hours of overtime. So we're looking to get the, the Select Board to authorize us to apply for the grant, and, uh, we have a spot here for Caroline to sign, to sign as the financial officer, a spot here for, uh, Mike to sign as chair, and on this page as well, to sign.
Any, uh, any discussion from the board? Denise?
No.
Miles?
I'm just curious how, how valuable you, you view this training for him?
Well, I think that is extremely valuable, um, you know, fortunately, we haven't needed to use a SWAT team over here in quite some time, actually, never. Um, however, they have gone to, you know, Farrenton, over some over Rochester, Lee, and whatnot. You know, when I see with this type of training here, it, uh, it's one more tool in their basket because, as I say, it's explosive type. Uh, breaching as opposed to using a battering ram, so it's actually safer for the team to use this as opposed to going in manually trying to knock down a door.
So the maximum the town may be on the hook for is two hundred and thirty dollars and change? Two hundred and thirty-five?
Well, two thirty-five, thirty-six, yes.
Rather modest investment, I would say.
Yeah, no.
Training of one of our officers, so is there any objection to me signing this? Well, we have a motion, you can...
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion that we authorize, um, the, uh, what did you call it?
Officer Hancock?
Officer Hancock, but what is the breachment training?
What, in the breach training, yes.
Breach training.
I'll say, okay, all of them favor, say aye? Aye, opposed? All right, so I can figure out the assignment.
Um, Chief, is this to be paid out of the training line and then reimbursed, or do you want this in? Do you have a reimbursement?
This will come out of the fee law, fee law, whole night security reimbursement line item.
Okay.
He said the overtime, overtime command.
He said it was pretty soon, and it was like the end?
May.
Oh, May, yeah, that's pretty soon.
May nineteenth to the twenty-fourth.
In beautiful New Jersey.
Uh, depending on your schedule, I would schedule the, uh, the swearing in and the badge presentation to Officer Malata on the twenty-ninth.
Of this month?
Of this month. The following week, y'all should be going to academy.
What time is EverSource coming in, do you know?
Um, George was arranging that, so I believe six-thirty, but I can confirm that with him. So, I would say, schedule this for a time that works and we'll talk about something else, yeah.
If we had a set time, then, what's best for you?
Whatever works for you. Want to get done first thing right after the public, uh, public interview?
Sure.
Six-thirty on, um...
Yeah, on the twenty-ninth.
That's all that I have for you.
Okay, um, we were going to discuss the salaries tonight. Um, it's my understanding that a non-public personnel issue you got to discuss with Miles and I, you want to discuss with Denise before we take it up?
Is it non-public tonight?
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
No, no, it's Wednesday night.
No, we, you and I and Miles had an opportunity to discuss something in a non-public session prior to this meeting.
Correct, yes.
Um, Denise wasn't able to be part of that conversation, you wanted to have that conversation over there before we take it up.
Definitely, yes.
Then I was just gonna say, we're not gonna take it up tonight, that's what, on your request for sure.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else for the Chief?
No, no.
Denise, do you have anything for him?
No, not that.
I'm trying my best to remember that you're there, sorry.
Just, um, I do want to do a write-along at some point, um, so I can, I can send you an email to get a date and time, I don't know, like, you know.
I'm assuming you want to work out one in the evening?
Yeah.
That's the best time to go.
At a time that, um, I've got to see something.
Or you're not at work, too, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just send me an email with, you know, a couple of dates of availability and times and whatnot, and we'll make it happen.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Good, I guess.
All right, George.
Thank you.
I'm ready, guys.
All right, so, Fire Department Mayor may not be in this meeting, is that what I'm saying?
Good luck.
George will not be in tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay, we have welfare to take up?
We do.
Okay, I'm assuming we'll need to go into non-public for that.
Yes, please.
Do we have personnel issue two at the very end?
Um, I, I don't believe we need to do that because, unless, unless the board feels the need. I spoke with you all individually, so...
Do we want to, um, do we want to go into non-public now to do welfare, or do you want to wait till the end?
Seems easier with the end, but...
All right, we'll go at the end. So we'll, we'll table this for now. Our town administration, Fire Department salaries, is that what it says?
Yeah.
There. We have not taken up the police salaries either, so we're gonna table that until next week, I guess. I didn't realize that the Chief wanted to discuss, and depending on what we, what we may or may not be able to do there, we may or may not be able to do something here, so I would suggest we table it. Will that work with their, their timeline, or do they have to have decisions?
Um, there's no payroll this week, so that's fine.
Payroll next week?
Yes.
So it gets to be there to decipher everybody, then?
Well, they're in the middle of a quarter and they're paid by the quarter, so it's less, it's less urgent for them.
Okay, so is there an objection to tabling this, then, until we resolve the police one?
I'm not that with that.
Miles?
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna table that, then. Budget Committee's secretary position, we have reposted it, but I understand that, um, we've, we've heard from one of the other applicants?
Yes, and this is good, and she'll work out really well when she's available. She will not have a lot of availability at first. Uh, I'm still suggesting that the board hire her because she will be a great fill-in candidate for the long term, and, um, it's better than what we've got going on right now, so...
This, this is one of the previous applicants that...
Correct, and she has, um, yeah, she was working in the legal office, so she, she can write, so...
So Denise, we, we had, obviously, you know, we had someone, we had a candidate, we agreed to hire that person, and the person never showed up.
Yeah, yeah.
So the person that was our backup candidate is still willing to be our backup candidate? And so, I think we're, we're suggesting we go forward with her, um, and keep the position posted, unless it's someone else?
Yes.
Who could do it on a more full-time basis? Does that work?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Yep.
All right.
So, there's her name if you wanted to look over the application, although if you could give her name down to some, or spelling too.
Oh, yeah, sorry, so we need to hire the person, that's right. Okay, so Miles, you, I've seen this already, so you can move it.
All right, uh, I will move that we hire Brianna Lewis to fill the position of Budget Committee's Secretary.
Second, uh, is there any discussion? Seeing not all of them in favor of hiring Ms. Lewis to be the Budget Committee's Secretary, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Nice, taken care of. Uh, next order of business is to discuss the CIP Committee. Um, we, um, have done some more digging, um, it does not look, it does not appear that, um, that the committee can just go away, but...
Correct.
Um, that it is the, um, how's it creation, it's under the auspices of the Planning Board, which, um, makes sense and doesn't make sense, I guess, depending on the perspective.
But can be delegated to the same.
But can be delegated to the Select Board, correct, um, and seems to have been in the, at least in the immediate past. In the years passed, it was, uh, a, a member of the Select Board, a member of the Budget Committee, and a member of the Planning Board, and, and the town admin staff had been part of it as well, and I would assume would continue. This past year, it was, um, it was a, sort of more an open call for...
We had, um, it was an open call and two, um, we ended up with two public members on that, in addition to a Budget Committee representative and a Planning representative, and a, and a board ex officio, too.
And I would suggest moving forward, you go back to the way that it had been working, I think it worked rather, it was successful, just having a ex officio from the Select Board, Planning Board, and the Budget Committee, and, and the town administrative staff. I think you'd have, you would have, um, a, a good working group that, um, that is invested in each of those committees, and brings a different perspective based on their involvement with those committees. And I think you can have a, a informed conversation with, um, the department heads as to what their, their needs and their goals and their long-term plans are, so, that's what I would suggest for the coming budget season. Denise, you're the ex officio to the Budget Committee for us, what, what are your thoughts?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes, no, that's fine. I mean, I mean, that work, we, it was, uh, it was Kevin, was, I think, is he on planning?
He's planning, yeah.
Yeah, he was on the committee, myself, and who was he on?
Bill Irving.
Bill Irving from Budget, maybe?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I believe it was Bill Irving, so, yeah, so we'll just have to put it out there, see who they're gonna put on it. But Bill's gone.
Right, so from the, I'm looking at myself, I guess, 'cause I'm filling in on the Budget Committee, you come back. So at the, at the next meeting, if, if you're not back and able to make it, I'll, I'll go again, but, so we need to...
No, I think I can come back.
The twenty-fourth?
Yes, I will be at that meeting.
Okay.
Yes, I can go back to work on that Monday.
Okay. All righty, then I will leave it to you to bring up to them that we need to have an appointment to that committee from that board.
Sure, okay.
Committee, rather, and, um, planning as well.
And John is the chair still, right?
Correct.
John Ordway, yes, yeah.
Okay, I'll drop him an email, but you can put it on the agenda.
Have we had a meeting since that organizational meeting, they haven't, right?
Budget?
Yeah.
No, it was just that one, the meeting.
So I have an update later in the, later in the, in the, about that, sorry, yes, John was re-elected as Chair of the, of the Budget Committee, so I'll give you an update when it comes at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
You good with that, Miles?
Yeah, but I'm happy to be the, the ex officio on that committee.
I mean...
Yeah, Denise, did you have a...
I'm hearing, what did you say?
Um, I'm happy to be the ex officio on that committee.
On CIP?
Yeah.
You've got it, buddy.
Unless... No, no, now it sounds like you really want it.
I'll move that, uh, we...
No, 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 no.
That's fine, then.
Don't say if you want to, I can be your backup.
Okay.
I'll move that we appoint Miles England to be our rec on the CIP Committee.
I second that.
All right, all of those in favor? Aye, opposed, or you're on the CIP Committee?
Thank you, Miles.
Congratulations. Um, all right, EverSource is coming in on the twenty-ninth to discuss, um, LED lights?
Yes, and I will, that's just a placeholder to remind us, I will reach out to them and make sure the time that doesn't conflict now with your other engagement.
Coming at seven, maybe?
Something like that.
I didn't see, I didn't look up, sorry. I'm so focused, mine, I have my glasses, I'm so focused, I'm trying to see the page, I didn't see you come in, sorry. You're involved, I get it. All right, so Mark's here, Denise, this is your...
Oh, goodie, awesome, awesome, thank you.
Report for the inning?
Yeah.
This is a copy of a reimbursement that has to come back to Sauce, it's all right, I have it for that.
Okay.
These are the ones that, you know, you wanted to change, you're not...
Fantastic, yeah, I did that, yeah.
The other guy that you were with the other day and saw that, and then there's two other new folks in there, a lot of operating information you could...
Fantastic, thank you for that.
You're very welcome. One purchase order this evening I have to present, uh, number one five one seven is to, um, Seacoast Technical Assistance Response Team, which is start, which is our annual dues for, um, our hazmat, um, coverage. And it's for six hundred and four dollars.
All righty.
And that comes out of our line item that is specific for that event and other hazmat services, so we're fine with that.
I'll move purchase order, uh, one five one seven to Seacoast Technical Assistance Response for six hundred and four dollars for the annual membership.
Second that, did you...
You have a hard time hearing everyone?
So, it's, uh, I was just gonna bring it back to you, so, uh, Mark has brought in a purchase order for, uh, his annual dues and membership dues to the Seacoast Technical Assistance Response Team, the hazmat team, and it, it's a budgeted expense.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? It's been, fifteen seventeen's been moved in second, if all of them favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I like those on that.
Anything else for us, Chief?
That's all that I have, unless you have anything for me this evening.
Anything for the Fire Chief?
No.
No, no, that's it?
No, all is there? Uh, Fire Pond is a place to learn.
Still folks there, and they'll get there.
We talked about it as we gave it to the manager.
That's still a process, and we can figure that, that's all I got.
All right.
Thank you for your attendance on Saturday, it was a beautiful night out.
Have, yes, thanks, okay?
Anytime, all right, thank you.
Have a good night, Mark.
You too.
All right, uh, next we are at Bookkeeper Admin Assistant Job Description, which you gave us last week.
Yes.
And I still have it. Somewhere new. Everyone have an opportunity to take a little look at this, actually.
I did.
Yep.
So... I think my only comment is, do you think you'll be able to find someone that can do all this for what we're offering?
That is the million dollar question, so, yes, so, um... One, one thought I had was to, you know, post it without a, um, a specific dollar amount and, and see what we get for people and, and what they find is, um, you know, what their salary requirements are rather than suggesting a specific rate, so I don't know what the board's thought is about that. You know, through my conversations with the rec department, I can, you know, there are arguments on both sides. Sometimes people don't want to apply for things that don't have some kind of posted idea.
Um, yeah.
What did we budget for this, like seventeen dollars?
Um, I believe it was sixteen at, um, twenty hours a week. So here we are, you know, you have a, you know, a small amount of flexibility in that it's a little bit later in the year, but whatever flexibility you think you have is gonna come out of a default budget, so, you know...
Right, for next year, that's what, that's what happens.
So that's not very helpful, so, I would, um...
The salary range is, it, putting the salary range, I think, is, was the way to go. I think you should do that. I think we should get a ton of people to apply.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I tend to agree that it's gonna eliminate a lot of noise from people that...
That's the other side of it, yeah.
I mean, you don't want just applications for application's sake, and you want quality people applying, right? And if they, they see upfront what we're paying, then they can make that decision, you know?
Okay, so, um, so then what are we posting for, up to sixteen?
Yeah, I would say that up to sixteen dollars an hour. All right?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's only can't go any higher, so... But if you're wondering if it's more strategic to, to offer a lower, or, I mean, you could also say, you know, salary measure it with, um...
Well, yeah, that's what I thought.
With experience, I guess you could do that, I mean, you could, but...
But like Miles says, you'll get noise.
Right.
To some degree, you'll, you'll get...
You could be wasting some people's time, too, I mean, you just can't, I mean, you know...
It's a waste of everybody's time to interview somebody that's not going to really take it in the end.
Right, exactly.
Okay, Denise, are you okay with that, up to sixteen?
I'm having a really hard time talking to you guys.
Okay, we were better off with the cellphone last year, or last week. Um, the, well, she's in the office phone today. So we, um, we were saying, on the ad, we would say, um, up to sixteen dollars an hour for the position. We were discussing whether or not, we thought it made sense to, to post the salary.
Yes.
And Miles and I are the opinion that it might make sense to actually post a dollar amount.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, so we're all in agreement, then? So, post away. So, did we have any, any, anything we wanted to add to the job description, besides the whole lack of a lot of stuff we want this person to do?
I thought it was well-written.
It is, yeah.
Gotcha.
All right, I'd say go for it, not just sixteen dollars an hour, good luck, hopefully we find lots of people.
Thank you.
All right, uh, planning training, so there is some interest by at least two members of the Planning, um, Board for, uh, for training that's put on by the Governor's Office of Planning, which is not called that anymore, was it, Paul?
No, the Office of Strategic Initiatives, they're, um, so, I haven't published it widely to the Planning Board, but I believe we'll get, you know, at least two or three people who are interested in, um, the conference that the State Office is holding. The, um, the fee is sixty dollars per person, so, someone reached out to me from the Planning Board to ask if that was something we would cover. The Planning Board does not have its own training line, so it would come out of the executive training line.
So they used to.
Yeah, I thought, I, I recall they used to, too.
But they, we also have, um, I wish, I, I have my glasses, um, we have a planning consultant. What is, has Mr. Krebs gone even close to his, uh...
Well, we canceled the last couple meetings.
Oh, so...
Well, and it's not just that, but it's, um...
Of course, a big case could come up and we need him for...
Right, it's Jay Stevens, too, it's, it's, if there's somebody else that you need to, like, if you need to call, um, Radigan or somebody, yeah.
All right, so it also includes that, okay, there.
Well, we just have to take out a contingency, yeah.
Or where else would you suggest it?
Um, I would suggest the expense itself would come out of executive training, which does not really have fluff in it for extra space to, to handle it, but I'm sure we can find the money elsewhere without specifying where, just because...
Yeah.
It's early, it's not that much money.
Right, but I mean, it's important to train these people.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta offer training.
They're, they're new, they're really new, and, you know, I would hate to disenfranchise people who earnestly want to learn and, and...
All that, and people coming before the board deserves them.
There, there's that, too.
To have folks that know what they're talking about.
It's, it's an in-person training somewhere?
Yes.
Um, I mean, I think we would want to make clear that you're not covering mileage or...
All right, we'll cover their, their...
The reg, the registration fee.
The registrations, yeah, I would say so, and Denise, are you okay with them offering it to the, um, to the full Planning Board?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, sure, so, are you both okay? I can't imagine all of them would want to do it, but, um, if there's more than two or three, or, you know, wanna go, it's gonna be beneficial to the town a lot more.
Okay, I agree.
It's sixty dollars a person, it's not, you won't be able to find...
Have you been to that training?
No, and I'd love to go, I don't, I don't recall what date and if I'm... No, and I'd love to go, I don't, I don't recall what date and if I'm available to go, I'm, I'm considering it.
I'm just curious if it's the type of training that one person can go and come back and.
And show everyone.
Well, possibly, but, but also, they have three different workshop slots, and for each of the three different workshop slots, they're offering five different topics.
Oh, okay, so.
So, there's a benefit to sending more people.
Benefit, but they can bring back, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we're gonna open it up to the entire planning board?
We'll do, thank you.
Okay, and there's, well, on that topic, I wasn't here, I was out of state last year, but there was the planning board, I mean, the budget committee had a training too, didn't they?
Um, they hosted the municipal association here for budget training, that video is still on the drive, and that's been disseminated, that, that's been made available to them, so they know it's there.
Okay, alright, okay. Well, we've, and how much was it to have them come out?
Uh, $550.
Okay, well, um, there were what, three members? But you've already, you've already forwarded that link to, alright.
They have it.
Alright, we can see if there's any interest. Denise, can you see if there's interest with the, the current budget committee? See if there's interest in, in having that training again, if there isn't, then at least the resources are available online that were presented last year.
Okay, I'll, I'll check with them.
And if we're doing it for the planning board, we should be doing it for the budget committee too, other things.
Okay.
Uh, just didn't make it on the agenda, alright, appointments, so the tree warden, fence viewer, and the, the two parks and rec positions are open until the, until the 19th of this month, I saw, was the posting that went out, it was brought up to our attention, that we didn't post job descriptions with these, 'cause they've been sort of honorary in.
Yeah, ceremonial.
Ceremonial in the last several years, so there aren't job descriptions that I'm aware of that exist in the town. But there are by statute for at least tree warden and parks and rec, or?
Tree warden and fence viewer, I imagine parks and rec, that's just, you know, I'll look into it.
Okay, so, we know that we have until the 19th, have we heard that, the thing just went out, what, recently?
I think it went out today.
She posted, okay, so, we haven't had anyone.
No.
Clambering to get any on it, okay. Okay, well, we'll wait till the 19th to hear who signs up for it. So, the department head meeting, we had a meeting on this past Friday, with myself, Caroline, Chief Rutherford, Chief Ducharme, and George, to discuss a number of things. A few of the things that came out of this, there were several that came out of this meeting. The biggest concern, I wouldn't call it complaint, 'cause it wasn't, it wasn't a complaining meeting, it was very constructive, but a lot of concern around the purchasing policy was brought forward initially by Chief Ducharme, but it was shared by all of the, all the department heads that there's, the, the purchase order limit is far too low. And, will I say that, do you have, they're readily available for me? Chief Ducharme put together a list of all the other towns.
I'm not sure.
And what they have for purchase orders. And it's, I know you're gonna be shocked, Rollinsford is the lowest, but I also did remind everyone that, um, thank you.
Sorry.
That, that up until several years ago, we didn't have a purchase policy in place, and that the goal when the policy was put into place was that it would be revised, and that things like credit card limits, who gets credit cards, and purchase order amounts could change. It was sort of a trial, especially with the credit cards, 'cause we had never had that in the past. So, Chief Rollinsford's at, for purchase orders, Rollinsford's at 200, Milton's at 500, Farmington's 1,000, Barrington's 2,500, Milton is 2,500, Uderm is 3,000, Lee is 5,000, Berwick, Maine is 5,000, Summersworth is 5,000, and Madbury, they don't have a limit, but they do have a credit card where their chief of police, I guess, has a $5,000 limit, is that, am I right?
That's pretty simple.
Um, and Stratford has no limit at all, you can go and buy whatever you want apparently, without a purchase order, which I'm not suggesting. But, um, so the chief has had, raised a concern that, you know, a lot of the, what he comes in here for, and what all the department heads come in here for, are what he would characterize as small dollar amount purchase orders, which is legitimate, I mean, the one this evening wasn't all that low, it was like $2,000, I guess, and change, but, you know, it was. There are lots of evenings where he'll come in for much smaller ones, and had suggested that perhaps that is time that we, we move forward. He, he walked us through how it used to be $25 per purchase order, and then we were kind enough to raise it to 50 a few years back, and then, several years back, went to 50, and then a few years back, we went up to 200. So, um, he's suggesting that we need to move off of that as well and go higher. He did not give you dollar amount, but, and again, he gave these examples of what the different communities are doing. So, we don't have to decide tonight, but as we are going through our purchasing policy, is, the department head to wish that we increase the limit on purchase orders and on the credit cards. What are, what are current, what's the current?
Um, it's the same as purchase orders, they can spend up to $200 at a time. But they also have only $1,000 a month, and the $1,000 a month is problematic.
For, for a certain department, right, yeah, so, um, he was also concerned about that as well, as were George and Chief Rutherford too. So, something for us to think about, this is why we have these meetings, so they can bring this, this sort of stuff to our attention. Like I said, we was, there's a learning curve, you know, we wanted to make sure that, that particularly the credit card wasn't abused, it has not been, maybe time to, you know, review again what, what the limits are, and what, what the per purchase or per transaction limit is gonna be.
So, what happens now if they have a $199 thing they wanna buy, they?
They can do that, and that's fine.
So, they contract with the vendor and you cut them a check, or?
Yes, as long as they, you know, they have to approve the invoice, so that they, that I know that they received the item, they're happy with the item. They still have to approve it, but then I just pay it and it doesn't go to the board.
For the credit card, and if it's anything under $200 for a purchase order, too, or anything, yeah, under $200, they, they don't need a purchase order.
Right, so, so a vendor will bill me, or it goes on the credit card, but they're, they can do it on their own for under 200.
So, but if they need to buy something for 201, they do have to come to us for a purchase order?
Yep.
So. And again, we, we also didn't have the same level of administrative support.
Right.
As we're sort of gearing up towards now, that was approved in the last budget. So, it's, it is, it's, um, it's something that we, we should be considering. We don't have to do it, but.
Sorry, I might. What sort of reporting capabilities do you have out of, you're using QuickBooks?
We're still using, yes, we're using QuickBooks. It, it, what you're looking, what you're looking at in front of you, the budget. Essentially, I can get you that information, not well formatted. So, you can at least get an idea of what the balances are online, on, on each line. They are not nice to look at, and they have a lot of lines with zeros for lines that were inactivated over time, but there's no way to create a report without them, yes.
Really?
There's some things, so, you know, it takes V lookup's and like that to get, you know, it takes a lot, some filtering and effort to get like a nicer looking readable report out of it. So, I echo the idea that I think it would be more efficient for everybody if the limit were upped, but I would caution you that until we have a bookkeeper in place, there's not a lot of time to do the kind of reporting that I, I would hope that you would want to balance that.
We're working towards that.
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked.
I totally didn't hear what Caroline said, but when, when everyone stops talking, I just have a comment, so.
Sure, go ahead Denise.
Well, one of the things that is a real concern for me to increase this is, or to allow it to be higher, is that when we have times in our year when we have a cash flow problem. And we need to be cautious of that. Also, we still have from some department heads who spend first and then turn in. Again, that's a concern for me. So, increasing takes, takes the, increasing it takes, the board doesn't get notified until after it's over with. And I, I have a concern for that, for some spending, so that's my guilty temper.
Okay, like I said, we're not making the decision tonight, but as we get fully staffed, it's something that we need to be looking at again, I would suggest.
You, you can also, when you, when you go over the policy, you can increase spending limits on certain lines and not on other lines, if you think that some would be, you know, need more oversight than others.
Right, that's true. You know, and there are certain items too, that where a blanket purchase order makes sense. You know, electricity is electricity, the.
Yeah, but that's not them doing it, that's us doing it.
No, no, I know, what I'm just saying, when we're reviewing the purchasing policy, this is something else we should be looking at as well. So, it's not just this, I mean, there are other efficiencies.
I just think that the bottom line of the budget isn't their concern, it's the board's management concern.
Right.
And also, to certain times of the year, when cash flow is low, we have to also conquer spending a little bit. And if they have those abilities to do what they wanna do, then that's, that's putting up there a risk. So, I'm, I mean, I'm certainly willing to talk about it when the time comes with the department heads and stuff, but I think we should be cautious, I think what they have works right now, and so if they have to come in, they have to come in and give time to be out at this point, but I'm willing to listen.
Okay, well, as I said, we're not there yet, but these are some of the concerns that were expressed by, by our department heads. We also discussed having an employee recognition dinner, this is not something that the town has ever done before. Departments themselves have recognition dinners, but they never get together as town employees. I mean, the, the, there was a lot of discussion about the, the training that happened the last two weeks ago, over insurance training, I'll call it, at the fire station, there was, there's an appreciation by, by the department members of having all the staff together and being able to have the one conversation and not just sort of being in their silos, which I thought was refreshing, I was happy to hear that. But we also don't recognize them as town employees, we, we have a police awards dinner, they have, the fire department has one in the highway and transfer station, don't at all, but we should be encouraging and recognizing our employees for a job well done, I would say, on, on a yearly basis. So, the department heads were very open to that idea. Bob said in his 26 years as chief, he's never heard a select board member actually suggest doing that, which I find shocking, but whatever, taking him as his word, so. I don't know how you all feel about it, but, you know, it would be, either something like, the police department now does like a spaghetti dinner. We could, um, did Mark say they do a potluck maybe? Or maybe they have it backwards, but it could be a potluck, it could be a spaghetti dinner, it could be something like that. And it wouldn't be a huge amount of money either, so, in fact, we might even be able to find the first year, get donations and. Of food, or it could be a potluck, if that's what we wanna do, but I think it's a, a very, it's a nice way, and it's, it's a, an easy way, I would say, for us to do what we probably have been doing all along in recognizing our employees for a job well done over the year.
I think it's a great idea.
Yep, alright, so, I'd like to start working on it, I wanted, I was gonna say, maybe the first one could be at the end of June, before people disappear on, on family vacations for the summer, or whatever they're doing for the summer, and before we start in earnest on, on this year, on the coming year's budget. 'Cause we're gonna be doing that a lot earlier this year apparently, so. If we, if we adopt the, the schedule that the, the budget committee sent us, which we'll, we'll talk about in a few minutes, but, I mean, end of June, like I said, it's before people disappear for the summers, for the summer rather, on various vacations. Probably the last time before budget season that we, we have an opportunity to sit down with them, so. Does that work for everyone, or?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright, so, I'll reach out to the department heads, but, um. Can't figure out how to get back on my phone.
I was wondering that.
I had to reset it, so, it wasn't pretty, but I had, um. Cloud backup, so, I'm assuming we would probably wanna do it on a weekend, maybe, I'm guessing? Uh, so it's, um. So, the, so, the, so, most of the employees can attend. I cannot do it on the 22nd, I'm out of town that day, but the 29th is open? Or the 3rd, or the 28th or 29th of June? I don't know if, um.
Those.
Do you have access to your calendar by any chance Denise?
I don't.
Okay. Alright, when do you, well, I'm not gonna ask unfair questions, 'cause you don't have a calendar there, so. I will not do it, alright, so, can we pencil it in for the 29th?
The last weekend in June?
Yeah, the last Saturday in June.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly get back to you on next week, if, you know, but yeah.
If that doesn't work, then we can, we can try to find another, um.
Yeah.
And we, we wanna discuss also, do we wanna, do we wanna open it, so obviously there'd be the employees and their families, I would say, you know, if they have a spouse or some sort of significant other that they wanna bring. Friend, I don't know, whatever they wanna bring. And then, obviously, it would be the select board, but we could open it up to like, you know, the planning board could come, or the budget committee could come, maybe these other volunteer committees that are in town. I mean, I was envisioning something like at the Legion. It's not, there's, I don't know, like 100 people or something, that's not that many people, right?
You're probably gonna have a hard time getting the Legion on a Saturday in June.
In June, you think?
Yeah, I think that's probably, you're right.
I bet.
Your Friday.
Yeah.
It's what now?
Wedding season.
Yeah.
Wedding season.
I can, I can.
Maybe one of the upstairs rooms, but.
Maybe, yeah, I mean, there's also that, yeah, yeah, can we check into it?
Absolutely.
Alright, if that won't work, then, I don't know, maybe in July, I mean, my hesitation is going any further into the summer, people disappear on vacation, so. And, but, we could do it earlier, I just, I can't do it on the 22nd, I can do it the 21st, but.
So, why don't I call the Legion and find out about the 29th, and if that doesn't work, then I'll get some possible dates from the Legion and bring it back to the board.
Awesome, okay, does that work for everyone Denise, since you're here, she's gonna call, Caroline's gonna call the Legion and see if it's open, if not, check for other dates.
Okay.
Alright.
Yep.
Uh, what else did we talk about there? Uh, joint training opportunities, there was interest in having more opportunities like they had with Primex coming in to discuss insurance, defensive driving, that sort of stuff. So, they're looking for more opportunities like that, so, as they come up, Caroline will pass them on to us and to them to see if there's interest, but it seemed like the beginning of, of a positive conversation in the departments wanting to spend more time training with one another, which is very positive. Yeah. And the last thing that we discussed, we had postponed going down to the fires, rather, police station to meet with the officers, as we did with the member of the fire department, a couple weeks ago. So, the new date, if it works for everyone, it's because it's their training night, which is a lot easier for us, for us to go to them on one of their training nights than to try to hurt that many folks. There's only three of us, it's a little easier, but it was May 14th, which is a Tuesday night. I need to check my own calendar, but it's the only night in May, there isn't something. Alright, book it. What, do we know what time their training starts?
I don't, you didn't say. I don't, he didn't say, so we should check.
All right, so that's when the chief suggested we come down.
Okay.
So if that works for folks, I'll put it on my calendar right now to. I'm gonna put it in for 6:00 PM, but I know it's not kind of these six, I think it's 37, but. We will, Caroline will confirm. All right. And we're gonna be meeting downstairs at the RPB. And again, just be an informal discussion with them, just like we did with the fire department.
Okay.
Meeting between us and our employees. All righty, I think it's almost in my calendar, sorry, just make sure I don't lose it here. I've got a disadvantage, let's see, I think I put the Edison right. Oh, it's gonna take it, so. All right, um, and that's, uh, that was, uh, the crux of our conversation on last Friday. About an hour or so, and we're gonna meet again in.
July?
Beginning of July.
Beginning of July, the beginning of the new quarter, we have to talk with a date. But, um, it will work for all the department heads, but it seemed like the beginning of a, of, um, fruitful conversation, I think, so. Policy review, we have, um, our three standing items, welfare, personnel, um, purchasing. You've heard that there's a desire by the department heads to update the purchasing policy. Welfare, we're going to leave to you to direct us how you, what changes you think we might need to make.
Okay.
And, um, personnel, we will deal with after, um, we'll table.
A couple of months, yeah.
We need to table it for a couple of months until we resolve something else, so. All right, we are at town administration, board member activities, so I'm gonna go first. The budget committee met and organized last week, uh, last Wednesday, I guess it was. John Ordway was, um, re-elected chair, Suzanne Hewitt was elected vice chair. They have, um, as a committee, decided, voted to, um, fill the vacancy created by Bill Irving's resignation by putting a call out to the town to get interested folks to submit their names. Did that actually happen yet, do we know?
Um, the, the call went out, yes.
Okay, all right, I thought I saw it, but then I thought, did I see it, but, okay. Uh, so the email went out over via the town website and we're to repost things. We should post something here.
I believe it is.
Okay, all right. So we'll wait to hear back, oh, they will wait to hear back and they will, um, they gave a two-week window. As the names come in, or as, at the deadline of the names come in after those two weeks. John or, or someone will, will, will just.
I, I am collecting all the letters of interest. They are due by the 19th, which is the Friday before the meeting on the 24th.
All right.
Those people have been told in that public outreach message to be available on the 24th, to be interviewed by the budget committee.
Right.
The budget committee will get all of those letters of, of interest on the 19th, whatever comes in.
Right.
And those people will come in on the 24th and they'll, they said they intend to decide that night.
So, did you hear that Denise? You'll, on the, on the 19th or the day after, you'll get a list of, um, of all the names and the letters of interest to folks that wanted to, to serve the remainder of that, that, for a year, I guess. And, um, on the 24th, uh, the budget committee, you will, um, will decide who will fill the vacancy.
Okay.
Okay? Also, that evening, there was, um, Suzanne had prepared a schedule, a draft schedule of, um, of the budget committee's, um, schedule for the coming year. Which I thought was fabulous.
Yep.
You'll notice that, that it starts a lot earlier, uh, than, than this past year. They're suggesting, if this goes forward, and I have no objection to it, but, uh, that, um, the first, um, presentations by departments will be on October 23rd, which means that the select board has to have their budget done by then. So we'll be starting, um, this summer.
Yep.
So, uh, months before, um, I mean, at least a month before we, we started previously. The only other thing on here that I, I suggested Suzanne needs to change was the setting of the delivery session dates. That's the prerogative of the select board and the school board. So I told her that I would imagine that the select board and the school board will work that out amongst themselves.
Okay.
And she said, yes, of course, I understand that. She just plugged in the, the first days, the, the, the day that it had to be to start, the day that it had to be completed by, so.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's up to us to, um, to plug in those dates, but other than that, I don't think, uh, there was, oh, there was a suggestion or a question as to whether or not, um, which day was it? Is it the 16th, the, the third quarter numbers?
Yes, that is a question.
Whether or not Caroline can have that information prepared by then.
Well, she gets her statuism.
Yeah, it's really, that's, that's really hard to, to my mind.
All right, so I would imagine then you'll be able to.
We'll make great efforts and we'll hope for the best and we should come close and it depends on staff.
So that could be one, that could be one item that they, um, that the, the budget committee and the select board may need to be flexible with.
Well, just, just see that the following, two lines down, the following week is, is a, is a presentation night, so.
Right.
They might have to bump it into that, or, you know.
Right, but I'm saying that as you get closer to it, you'll, um, you'll, you'll know exactly where you stand.
If they have to revise it, they have to revise it, but at least we have a framework and it's a good one.
So I, so that, I told the board, um, committee rather, that I would bring it to us as to whether or not we would, uh, would make edits or, or, or give our approval, I did not know. It seems fine to me, uh, based on what I believe to be their intention, so. I mean, it makes, it's, it's, it's important that, you know, all these dates are set out, so we don't miss deadlines, so. I mean, that was an issue that Suzanne brought up, um, during her presentation of these, that, um, that the, um, the, the last, um, public hearing or the last sign-off on, um, or not getting it signed off on time would have jeopardized any bonds that we, we might have been proposing last year or this past year. We weren't proposing any for this year, so it could as a move, but it's nice to have this all down, so you don't fall into that again, so. I think it's helpful for everybody involved, so. So is there any objection to, to sending this back to the budget committee saying that we, we approved?
Yep.
All right, well then Denise, I would leave it to you to tell, um, tell them that we, we approve of, uh, of the proposed schedule that they, they sent us.
Okay.
All right? All righty. Trying to think, anything else happen at that meeting?
Um, the withdrawal committee representative.
Oh, right, sorry, yes, so, um, that's right. So do we have a representative too? I don't remember if they said we did.
No, no.
Okay, so the budget, uh, the, um, SAU withdrawal committee that was authorized by, uh, by the voters in March. Joe Desch, who's a new member of the, um, budget committee volunteered to serve.
Okay.
So we say thank you to him. It was, uh, it almost came to fisticuffs, people were just jumping over each other trying to get on, so.
Hey, yeah.
They, uh, but, nah, yeah, so tongue in cheek, but, uh, he, he said he would be happy to do it, so we thank, thanked him for that, so. Other member activities, I've taken up all the monologues.
I don't have any this week. Um, when is our next Stormwater meeting?
The 24th.
Oh, that's also the 24th?
Yes.
Okay, is that gonna create an issue?
Um, I'm hoping that Denise will have budget committee in hand because I'll be at Stormwater since.
Yeah.
I had to meet that last one and that's got critical things going on, yeah. So I'll be at Stormwater.
Okay. All righty. Denise, any updates for you?
No.
All right. Uh, we hope you're doing well.
I am, thank you.
Good, all right. Review of correspondence, where do we have, uh, in front of me? I will do it then. Dear, we have something from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. Oh, yes. This is to notify us that, um, the, um, Regional Planning Commission has contracted with the HHS Department of Transportation to collect, uh, traffic volume data throughout the region. And we are on the list for, um, Route 4 at, um, Portland Avenue. It says at Main SL, what is that, State Line?
Yeah, that's what that looks like.
All the way down there?
To the bridge?
I guess, yeah. Huh, all right, well, they're doing a crap, traffic count there, I guess. So, just so we know, and, uh, expect to see the Stratford Regional Planning Commission employees wearing high visibility vests and using traffic, uh, safety precautions where ever necessary, including traffic cones. Now, there will be a rubber pneumatic tube to cross hole into traffic with three inch steel nails anchoring them. They have to count in the traffic, so. If you see someone out there in a vest standing by the side of the road, that's why.
All right.
All right. We have. A letter, um, from, um, law firm of Donahue, Donahue, Tucker and Chandela, Concord Law Firm, um, regarding, um, the Public Service Company of New Hampshire, also known as Eversource. Says, um, lawsuit, um, regarding, um, utility poles and whether or not they're taxable property. The, the latest round of the lawsuit, so. We are a party to that suit.
So, um, that came electronically and I sent it along to the assessing firm to see if they wanted to comment to the board about how they feel about how this is going.
We have been a party to the suit for decades, all right? At least, well, more than one, two decades at this point, I think. We're starting our second decade, I guess I should say. Eversource doesn't believe that, um, utility poles are taxable property and, I don't know, a couple dozen towns in the state, including Rollins, who disagrees. So, uh, it's just an update, it will be in the folder if you want to take a look at it. Uh, we also have a letter from, um, Mr. David Scott of Dover, who is acting as, um, um, counsel of some kind, advisor, to a resident in regards to a matter before the Board of Tax and Land Appeal, uh, regarding, uh, an abatement. And this is, this letter is to advise the BTLA board that agreement has been reached between Chad Robarge of Avatar and David Scott, representing Dr. Terry Bennett, to schedule a meeting between the two parties, in this case, within 60 days. As a town of Rollins, who is represented by an experienced certified general real estate appraiser of the Avatar Company, Dr. Ben is represented by a former certified general appraiser, David Scott, now retired. We fully expect a settlement will be reached at the time to be held at the convenience of both parties. So basically, they're, they're going to arbitration first before they have to go to the BTLA, is I guess what they're trying to say in that letter.
Yes. It fell out of process because he missed his deadline, so he worked it out with Chad and, and BTLA said that he could have an extension, so that's just a notification that. He's, he's worked it out with Chad.
All right, so we'll stay tuned to see what's going on with that. Ah, so the, uh, the state has sent us our, um, Town Road Inventory Collection Form to see if there's any changes, updates on, um, on any of our roads that are listed. And so there were, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different ones, it looks like. Discussing, um, whether or not the road is still listed as Class 6. If there's a new road, like Gaggen Hill Road, which is a private road, wouldn't have been on the previous inventory, right? I mean, this is not a yearly inventory, is it? I don't think.
Um, actually, I believe it is.
It is?
Yeah.
All right, so it didn't get changed before?
No.
All right, well, it's changed now, so, all right. And there are, um. Oh, updating, you know, the, who the member of the select board are, that sort of stuff. That sort of things, rather, that, um, need to get updated every year, who the road agent is, planning board chair, that sort of thing. So, we have that and with a, any objection, I will sign that we've updated it? All right.
And who's that from?
The Department of Transportation.
Okay.
All right. All right, let's be in compliance with DOT, all right. A letter from my favorite, Xfinity. Dear Chairman and Members of the Board, we are committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV services. Accordingly, please note that as of May 2nd, 2019, the monthly rate for Acorn TV will change from $4.99 to $5.99 per month. Changes due to an increase in programming costs from Acorn TV. I don't know what Acorn TV is, but it's gonna cost you a dollar more a month if you want it.
It's British TV.
Whatever. More power to you. Don't send all that stuff on, on TVs anyways, but. We have. All right, so there's a letter also. Report of settlement meeting in order.
That's the same, it's a more formal version of what you just read from Mr. Scott, that they're going to mediate.
All right, so. Herb Ueda et al versus Town of Rollins, so this is the folks up on, um.
There's a list of the properties on the front page there, it's property tax advisors representing all of them.
Okay, the name of the organization is tax.
Yes.
Property tax advisors. And their appeal to the Board of Land Tax, BTLA. They are also going to arbitration before a formal.
That is the process, they have to do that, yeah.
So this is just the formal, the actual forms that.
Exactly.
We normally get, okay. So, there's a whole list of those, all right, okay. And the other thing is the bookkeeper thing, we already approved that. So Miles, do we have anything, do we have the red folders now? We've done.
No, there's no red folder.
All right, so. Community import.
Um, and then the public.
Oh, yeah, that, that one, I see that. Seeing none?
No, I had one.
Yes.
I then hear that the library director was at your department head meeting. Was she invited?
She wasn't invited, actually. She was not, I didn't think about her. It was not intentional.
The library is.
Yes, so. So next month, or next quarter rather, I will, um, make sure that we invite her. It was not, um, it was not intentional. All right, any other public input? We, okay, seeing none, taking motion to go into non-public session to deal with welfare.
I'll move we go into non-public session to deal with welfare.
All right, I'll second that. Roll poll, Denise?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Mike, yes, we're in a non-public session to hear welfare petitions. And we're gonna go home right after this, so, no, I can't leave.
So why is it the library guy comes up to appeal?
Have a good night.
Because they report to the library trustees rather than the select board. So they have a part of their own policies and they have their own.
This is the Department of Lieutenant?